HB 707, requiring the Department of Environmental Services to establish a site-specific set back distance for proposing it landfills. We heard that bill last week. And I know that there is some work that needs to be done to make some changes to that bill. It was not discussed in the subcommittee this morning, but that is one that we were going to be working on. Now, I do know this morning, I had made a request to the Department of Environmental Services Director Wimsat to provide us with a map of New Hampshire based on the criteria set in the current version of HB 707, to show places in New Hampshire where a landfill could be cited and could not be cited based on the criteria in the bill. And so he was able to provide us with maps that show if there was a 3,000-foot buffer on surface water, the first map, which is being distributed, the maps are being distributed, shows where in blue landfills would not be able to be cited based on the surface water criteria. The second map shows the 10-mile buffer on, what is it, the brownfield sites or current landfill sites or superfund sites. And that also shows in white places where landfills would be able to be put. If you combine both maps, you will see the last map shows very small areas where a landfill would be able to be cited under the criteria set forth in this bill. So that doesn't leave a whole lot of places for landfills to be cited in New Hampshire, apparently. And that's just with the buffer on surface water and buffer on current landfills. So I want the committee to take a look at this. We can have a discussion about perhaps if there's any changes that should or could be made to the current legislation. I know that Representative Potenza was looking at making changes to the 10-mile buffer between on NPL and landfill sites. So I don't know, would you like to speak to the changes that you're looking at making to that bill?
Yes, so we can start with that one. So that's on page two, line, starts on line 34. I didn't realize the impact that it would have. There were certain sites that have been decommissioned for a long time, you know, more so just trying to protect, of course, any sort of groundwater contamination. That whole area could probably be removed. So also with just talking with other entities here, the 3,000-foot buffer could possibly change because we have, if we're going to use one or the other. So if we've got time of travel that we're using, we don't necessarily need to have the 3,000-foot buffer. So that could also change as well. We were just kind of throwing a lot of things out here. So and then, of course, on the back of the bill, page three, in regards, starts on line, I believe, 18, and goes into line 30 on page three for the violations. Because right now, you're not able to, you're not able to actually put a permit in if you have, if there's like active, if there's an active legal lawsuit going on, we could probably just mirror that language specifically. And I will get that language directly from Director Wimsat. So that's just mirroring that in here. And maybe in regards with, you know, if we wanted to say something about violations, you know, if there was repeated violations or issuance from, let's say, from the Attorney General's office or something like that, of someone that's like completely in noncompliance and that stays in noncompliance against the state and the authority of the state, we could maybe say something like that. But that would be an extreme type of situation.
Sure.
Because violations happen and there, you know, there's multiple violations that happen, and then they're fixed, and we don't want to make, we don't want to make sure that we're not being a little ridiculous, over the top. Mistakes happen. These are, you know, big, huge, multimillion-dollar facilities, and certain things happen, and they get fixed. So.
Now, I would also remind the committee, this is not an early bill, so we do have some time to work on it?
Yeah, that's what I was hoping.
Okay, yeah.
We already talked about, just in the beginning of the bill, which was about, where is it, adding in a potable water piece that was like in around...
Line 16.
Correct, thank you. And that was, those are pretty much all of, yeah, that's pretty much all of the issues that I had here. And I already had told you about the overcome word that was in here. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much all of them. If there's anything else, Director Wimsat, is there anything else that I missed here?
I don't know.
Okay, all right. Representative King.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the work the director has put in giving us this map. That being said, you know, the way I feel like this work should be done is that irrespective of any state or location, there should be some general principles around citing of landfills that are really universal. And in my mind's eye, we come up with these ideas of where a landfill should or shouldn't be, and then we determine whether or not it would fit in our state. And my attitude is, is that if we've come up with what we believe are good recommendations on landfill citing, and then we find out that it wouldn't fit in our state, my attitude is, well, then it shouldn't be in our state. So, you know, I'm looking at this map, and I'm seeing, yeah, there's a lot of groundwater all over the state. And when I think of landfills, I think landfills and groundwater are incompatible with one another. So my concern is, is that, my concern is that I don't, I hope we, I mean, it's not my bill, I'm a co-sponsor, but I'm not going to hijack it, it's not my baby, but I would be remiss if we started weakening the bill in order to allow for a landfill to be put in our state. You know, we're a small state, groundwater is everywhere, it's heavily forested. You know, places like Florida, they do, they have a ton of waste-to-energy plants, a ton of incineration plants, because their groundwater is literally under their feet everywhere in the state. They just can't do landfills like other states can. So, you know, we have a slightly different reason, but maybe it's just, the reason is we just shouldn't have landfills for other reasons. And so I just hope that we don't, we don't neuter the bill in order to, you know, cave to some idea that we're supposed to have landfills, because it could just be that our state is incompatible with landfills. So.
Okay. Representative Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. A question that pops into my mind, looking at this map, this topography map, this just didn't happen all of a sudden. I mean, this is, this obviously is a creation that's been, that's we got from the Ice Ages. So the question that I have is, how do we have landfills in New Hampshire anyways, to begin with? It appears they can't be anywhere. How were they committed to begin with?
Well, you know, certainly the issue is making, coming up with criteria. And based on the criteria in this bill, this is what the maps look like. And so, I mean, to Representative King's point...
But may I add a question?
Sure.
But this criteria, this topography map, like I say, has been with us forever, let's say. And I don't think the criteria, maybe the criteria was different when landfills were put in. I'm not certain of that.
Yeah, they were.
Not as a case of...
Absolutely were.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Potenza and Representative Subicaitis.
Yeah, I just wanted to answer that. So as, you know, just with, of course, technology and all of that, and just, and just the science has come a long way. We know, you know, before people were, you know, digging holes in the ground, there's lots of holes that were dug in the ground in Rochester, for example, before we had a state-of-the-art landfill that was put in. And so as, you know, as we get more information, as we have, of course, more expertise in this, and as we've come forward, we realize, you know, the different ways that technology has come forward. So I love the analogy of Florida. I also, I'm not going to, we're definitely not going to weaken this so that in any way, shape, or form, it impacts, it impacts public health or anything like that. So looking at this, you know, it just shows, you know, our great little state and, you know, all that, all that blue. And just from that article that just came out recently in Epsom with what's going to have to happen with the PFAS in the drinking water is just, it's crazy. So we have to be careful. I just, I want this bill to be smart. If, if we're basically taking care of, you know, time of travel in one area, we don't necessarily need to have something that doesn't make sense with a 3,000-foot buffer. It's one or the other. They're both would be, in a sense, somewhat of the same. So I just, I might have been a little aggressive first, but in no way am I, you know, you don't have to worry about it, Representative King, and I'm not going to back down on it. If it means that we can't, you know, there might be only one other cited landfill for the next 100 years in New Hampshire, well, that's one thing, but we also have to start looking at the technology that we are not using in New Hampshire at all. It's just from everything. We've, we've had a lot of bills that have come through in the last, in the last five, six years. Those things haven't moved forward. Just with the food waste alone, we're just starting that now. There's so much composting, incineration, smart recycling, we just, there's so much stuff that we could do. And I hope that we really move forward with these technologies and possibly bringing in an industry that we could, to New Hampshire, to help with that, to take care of our own waste, so.
I agree. Representative Subicaitis.
The other problem is that our bordering states, most specifically at this moment, Massachusetts has put in so many regulations down there that landfills are no longer accepting X, Y, and Z. So it's created a business model for companies to pick up that X, Y, and Z and sell it, or whatever they do, into New Hampshire. So you're no longer allowed to put mattresses in Massachusetts into the landfills, and I'm remiss at the moment to say what else, but we now, they want us, our small towns, to accept trash from out of the state. And I have a huge problem with that because I worked in Massachusetts for 35 years, but commuted from here. And I've seen all the medical waste come up in trucks. And it just bothers me that it becomes a business problem, and they have unscrupulous business practices to offer small towns free garbage removal, and towns with no zoning across the Great North, from Vermont across New Hampshire and into Maine. There's a lot of small towns that don't have zoning. And they go in there and they divide the population. And I think it's really rough to tell a town that can manage their own garbage suddenly that they need to accept garbage from out of state into these small towns. And we've got to stop that. Companies, I believe, do not have the right to get rich on our, on the backs of our small towns.
Representative Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to share a little anecdote. I was up in the Upper Valley yesterday and listening to Maroc on the radio, and they are doing a special on landfills. They have one landfill in Maroc. And they, when they talked about R6, they sounded envious. So I just wanted to let you know that there are different perspectives. I guess the distance you have from the landfill makes you feel more fond of it.
So I just want to add to our conversation to say that, you know, the solid waste management plan for the state is that the very last resort is to landfill something. To that end, I know the Solid Waste Working Group is working towards different points or different goals regarding taking things out or, you know, making sure certain things don't get in our landfills. We've already done the, you know, food, food waste to be composted and so forth. They are actively looking at not be putting paint there. We have a bill that's before the House right now that Commerce is considering regarding paint recycling, which I think is a, is a great move forward. We're, I think, next going to be tackling keeping mattresses out of our, out of our landfills and doing some recycling programs with that. So there's a number of things that we're doing and we're moving forward to reduce the amount of stuff that we're putting in landfills to begin with. And I also think that, you know, if we move, if we try and make some movement to, you know, keeping as much plastic out of our landfills, I mean, that's going to go a long way, too. So I think, my thought, my thought is that, you know, seeing that we're trying to reduce what we're putting in landfills, yes, the demand for landfills is going to go down. That being said, you know, we don't, I think, don't want to be so restrictive that you can't have a landfill anywhere. I agree with Representative King about using some newer technologies where we can do things like incineration and also smart recycling centers. And there's a host of other things that can help us get to that place where we don't need to put landfills anywhere. But for now, you know, this is, this is a reality, and unless we want to truck everything that we have out of New Hampshire at the cost of our taxpayers and our municipalities, that could be pretty expensive, too. And while I understand that, you know, we don't want to pollute the environment, that's a forever thing, that can be just as more, even more expensive to our taxpayers. The reality is, you know, there's, there's got to be some places that make sense if we need a landfill for the next 100 years. We'll only need probably just one. So anyway, Representative Bigspeak.
Yeah, I'd just like to get briefly back to Representative Minor's point about, or question about how did we cite landfills in the past? So historically, the way you cite a landfill is you take it out in the woods and you dump it.
Yeah.
And, and at some point, that, when that came to, we shifted to, well, you have a company and you don't know, or you don't want to use the proper cost of disposal, you know, the way it should be disposed of, so you send it to New Hampshire and you dump it. So that way, we get the Coakley landfill in, just outside, in Portsmouth, which is a major toxic waste site, and there is still wrangling about how to deal with the stuff that's seeping out of that. It was an online landfill. So at some point, there was recognition that you needed to put a liner under a landfill. Now it's up to, it really makes sense to have two liners under a landfill. So there's been a progression in terms of what it makes, you know, how you need, the precautions that you need to take in order to put a landfill in place. And one of the, what we're working on right now is that it's not just how you build a landfill, but it's where you build a landfill. And there are some places that it just doesn't make sense to build a landfill. I, we, we don't want to go back to the days where you just take whatever you have out of the woods, dump it, because that's clearly bad for everybody. But, so I think that when you say there are restrictions on where it makes sense to cite it, it doesn't mean you can't cite it anywhere. It's, so for instance, about Non-Carberry is on solid bedrock and clay. It's, the, the time of travel at Non-Carberry from that landfill to the nearest water body is, you know, way beyond what we would require in this bill. So there are sites that would, there are, there physically exist sites that would fit the requirements that we are considering here. It's just a matter of, we need to make sure that when, if there is a landfill cited, then it gets cited correctly. And, and then to the point of diversion makes more sense, yes. I think that when we talk about, you know, moving ahead with the composting program, what we really need right now is some entrepreneurs who want to set up large composting operations in the state. And because there is going to, there is, the demand for that is now there by law. So we need to, we need people who are willing to get into that business, and I think that they would do well to do so. And, and as we progress with other things, other methods of diversion, increasing recycling rates, and, and reducing the use of some things, and establishing EPR programs that, where the manufacturer will take those things back at their, at the end of the life, particularly things, you know, like electronics have valuable ingredients in them. And it really makes sense for the manufacturers to figure out a way to reuse those ingredients rather than dump them in the ground. So, so I think that we certainly don't want to go back to the unregulated dumping of things. But, and I think that the point is that Representative Potenza and Representative Aaron made about ways of reducing demand on landfills are also entirely to the point.
Thank you. And I want to add, too, that this is not a standalone legislation. The fact that we're working on other things like leachate management and, you know, other, other pieces of legislation, we know that there are some things that are maybe coming from the other side of the wall, too. Those things all together, I think, make a good framework for landfill citing in general. And I'm happy that, you know, we're addressing these things and we're working on them and trying to come up with something that will make sense. And so I appreciate everybody's comments. Representative Germana?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just say very quickly with respect to Representative King's comments before, I also agree, you know, the point isn't to, you know, find the map that's going to allow us to cite a landfill, but I'm quite the reverse, to find the map that allows us to cite a landfill if it's appropriate to find the right place. I will say, however, it is important for us to keep in mind that statute requires that DES kind of make sure that we do have capacity to deal with our own trash, right? So we are going to continue to, to produce solid waste, and I don't think we should become a state like a lot of other states that try to push as much of that onto other people. So whatever we come up with, we are going to need ways to deal with New, pardon me, New Hampshire produce solid waste. And hopefully, we can use the best technology available to minimize the amount of that. But I will only throw in my pitch from last year, too, that this is one of the reasons why I think having a publicly owned, state-owned landfill is the way to go, because the profit motive is not what's driving the process. It allows you to put a significant number of restrictions on what you do with waste and what is, what is brought in there. And it allows you to go looking for the most appropriate site as the primary criterion that you use to decide where it's going to go, as opposed to the primary motivation for a profit corporation is, of course, to be for profit. So I just wanted to throw in those comments.
Any other questions or comments? So, Representative Haskins, thank you. And good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to reiterate what we heard in testimony, we don't really have a capacity problem. We needn't worry that there's no place to cite a landfill. What we're doing in this bill is making sure that site-specific means that there are sand and gravel pits that are not appropriate for a landfill, but we have Carberry, we have Turnkey, we have landfills that have been properly cited. And as our capacity is, as our need is limited going forward, we certainly don't have to worry that there's no place to put a landfill. I think we're making good progress. I echo all the good comments that have been made, and I look forward to what this bill gives us.
Thank you. Anybody else? Representative Potenza?
Yeah, I just, I do want to, just because it's Turnkey, of course, in Rochester, that Turnkey has enough capacity to have taken all of New Hampshire's trash and more. So I just, you know, if it's, if we're just talking about New Hampshire, that has ever generated, that New Hampshire has ever generated. So we have to be looking at that. And the most important thing on every single permit is, New Hampshire trash comes first. And that's where the pushback has to start happening. We don't, I don't want to talk about, you know, the clauses and the, all of that kind of stuff, because when it comes right down to it, when we are giving, when we're permitting a landfill, we are saying that you have to, that New Hampshire's the priority. And we have to start making New Hampshire the priority, because right now, Massachusetts has basically got a ban on landfills. And if you look at their geographics, I've talked to a very, very smart scientist in Massachusetts recently, and they have, they have massive amounts of land where they could have a landfill that's out into the Berkshire's area and all of that. They don't want that. They don't want to touch any of that beautiful property that they have, but they don't have any problem in having that in New Hampshire. And we are so much smaller. So these are the things to think about. In that first map, there is a lot of white on this first map, if we just looked at the 3,000-foot buffer. And 86% of the state right now has clay. So I just wanted to talk about a couple of those things. You know, sorry if I got a little aggressive in the bill. I think that we'll get to where DES, as well as the committee, can settle on it. But I'm glad that we're, it seems as if everybody's kind of moving in the right direction on where we're headed. So I appreciate that.
Representative Howard? Yep, thank you. Representative Howard?
Madam Chair, I think that there, if there is any sense of urgency around this bill, it doesn't have to do necessarily with the capacity. It has to do with getting these things in place before the permitting happens, right? So I just, I just wanted to add that, because I think that, I think that we, I think we need to have a realistic sense of urgency, and capacity, I don't think is it right now.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so the bill needs some work. We have Representative Potenza working on some changes, and I guess we'll do that in collaboration with the Solid Waste Subcommittee?
Can you do that?
Yep, okay. So you guys can possibly get together at some point and discuss that, and see where you can maybe come up with a, with an amendment that would be more of what we were discussing this morning, and incorporate a lot of the points that were discussed.
Madam Chair?
Yep?
If I may, one more comment.
You may one more comment.
Thank you. The experience that a couple of us had when the rules were being adopted and Delcarre didn't allow our testimony reminds me that the rules that are currently in place, I think, are terrible.
terribly weak, and really, that's where the urgency comes from. Current rules do not give us the kind of things we're talking about today. So I would like to just echo the fact that time is important for this reason.
Well, I liked the testimony that the attorney from North Country ABC brought that showed the chart where she thought there were places, she compared the old rules to the new rules, and showing in places where they were stronger, and places where they were the same somewhat, and places where they were weaker. And I'm hoping that some of the changes that we are looking at with this bill will, in fact, make those places that were weaker a little bit stronger. So that's my anticipation. Representative Bigspeak.
Yes, also to the, to the aspect of rules, one of the points that Jelcar made when they approved the rules in December was that the, the points that were issued were policy, policy issues that, that Jelcar didn't have the capacity to rule on, that really needed to be clarified in statute. And that's what this bill is doing.
Yes. Great. Okay, and the other discussion on HB 707. So what we're looking at is forthcoming amendments for that bill and work in the Solid Waste Subcommittee to that end.